Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Katz?
Present.
Commissioner Laird?
Present.
President McLean-Hill?
Present.
Commissioner Neiman Brady? Vice President Ruiz? Three board members, a quorum is present. Madam President?
Thank you. I'd like to open the meeting with comments regarding AAPI Month. We'll have a presentation from Aspire as well, so I'm excited to see that. Good morning. As we come to the end of May, I am, we are, we join the nation in commemorating Asian American Pacific, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a time to recognize and celebrate the rich history, diverse cultures, and invaluable contributions made by the AAPI community. Sadly, 2023 marks yet another year in which the AAPI Heritage Month celebration takes place amidst a backdrop of anti-Asian actions, specifically the acts of violence that Marty made reference to last week that took place months prior in Monterey Park and Half Moon Bay. This only further emphasizes the importance of this month, compelling us to pause and do what we should be doing every day of the year, celebrating and lifting up our AAPI community, a community that has been so instrumental to the progress of this country and our city. I am heartened by the bravery of AAPI, of the AAPI community and their allies who speak out and stand up to show that hate has no place here. I am encouraged by the camaraderie and support of the LADWP family amidst these tragedies, because an injustice against one is an injustice against all. At LADWP, we continue to stand firmly with our AAPI colleagues and communities and condemn any acts of discrimination, inequity, and violence. As part of a diverse city, we have an even greater responsibility to provide a safe and welcoming place for our employees, our customers, and all members of the community. As part of our commitment to racial equity within the department, we must continue to foster and sustain an environment of respect and inclusion for our colleagues and members of the communities we serve, and be persistent in our efforts to ensure equitable access to our programs, resources, and services. LADWP, along with the newly recognized Employee Resource Group, Aspire, celebrates our AAPI employees and their distinct experiences. We seek to uplift and amplify their voices. AAPI employees and allies are invited to, well, have been participating in several events and activities over this month, and I understand had a pretty magnificent day of service yesterday, or on Saturday. I look forward to joining Aspire in their last event tomorrow. Happy Hour, that just seems like the place I should be. Thank you to everyone of AAPI heritage in our LADWP and city families for your contributions. We honor and celebrate you this month. Together, let's learn from one another and continue building connections that transcends borders and bring us closer together as a community. I would also like to take this opportunity to encourage, since we will not have a meeting between now and then, department participation for the second time in the Pride Parade, which will be June 11th. I've not yet made a department parade march. This will be my first this month, so I'm really looking forward to it. And I know that there will be information regarding our convenings, you know, all of the logistics around participation going out later this week. With that, we will move to general public comment.
Public comment is now open at this time. We have one public commenter. Please be mindful that you will have two minutes to address the board. The commenter is David Bond.
Good morning, Board. My name is David Bond, and I work out at the Pine Tree Power Plant. Nice jacket represents that. We've been out there for quite a while, and we're significantly understaffed. All electrical mechanics and senior electrical mechanics have been getting overworked 20%, 30%, 40% because we're understaffed. We don't have enough of us. Contracting brings personnel to come and temporarily fix things that, when they fail again, department personnel that are water and power people have to go and repair. This board, the Department of Water and Power Management, and the union have failed to create a training facility that provides and makes enough of us to do our job. I do not understand why that is the case. Water and power personnel are the best trainers, that do the best job, and work hard on water and power equipment on water and power property. Why don't we have a mo, we don't have enough money to create a state-of-the-art training facility for electrical mechanics, for electrical operators, for all of the positions that are so understaffed that we create? I understand that we cannot make golden handcuffs and keep those people after they've gone through a four, a four-and-a-half-year training program here. However, when they go to other places, they will be the best in the world, and they know where they were trained, and they know where they came from. Why will not we make the best and a good training facility for electrical mechanics and electrical distribution mechanics? That is the problem we've had for the last decade in stopping the bleed. Please don't stop people from leaving. Create more, so there are sufficient personnel to do our jobs safely. That's what I'm here to request, and I have been for over a decade. The last time I appeared before you, I complained about insufficient personnel, and then the board proceeded to go have a presentation for the next two hours showing how over a five-year study shows everywhere how we're short field personnel. We don't need more management. We have way too many chiefs and not enough Indians. Speaking as number two Indian, we need more. I'm very proud of this. This has been the best job I've ever had. I'm very proud of my coworkers, the many years I've been able to serve. We need to train our own people and get enough of us here so that when I leave, I've only been here for 36 years, I could leave next week, but I'd like to go do a little more for the department, and I feel I have a little more in me to give. Please, create a training facility, state-of-the-art. The current one we have out in Truustale, we've added on like a hamster cage, a couple, a little room over here and a little room in there. We have plenty of land, we have plenty of money. Why can't we create that facility and make our own personnel to take care of our own property and our own equipment? That is what I'm here to request. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Public comment is now closed.
Terrific. Thank you so much. A report by the General Manager.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, Board members. First, thank you for your comments on the Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and I'll give another brief update on that. And we do have, as you said, an Aspire presentation today. But first, I'd like to report one of the most really important recent accomplishments is that our Power System crews have completed the Priority One repairs, as promised. We completed it by last Tuesday. So we began, at the beginning of April, with over 1,400 poles. I believe the last report to the board, we still had 800 poles left that were Priority One that needed immediate attention. And under Simon Zuduh and the Power System leadership, they leaned very heavily into this with all of our crews, as well as newly arrived contract crews, and completed all that work. So I want to thank them. I want to thank all the folks in the Power System, the men and women in the field who really put their all into this effort and completed that work. Now, we're going to continue on with the Phase Two work, then we have a little more time on that, and we're organizing how to, how to do that the most efficient and effective way. But we've completed the Priority One repairs, and it's been communicated to all the city officials, as well as to all the customers that had a pole that was of concern in their, in their yard or next to their yard. So thank you, Simon, for the work you did on that. Also, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Simon to report on the Power System Annual Line Men's Rodeo, which was last Saturday. I know a number of board members were able to attend over the course of the time there. It was co-hosted by us and IBW Local 18. Simon, would you like to report on that, please?
Sure. Thank you, Marty, and good morning, Commissioners. Last Saturday was a great day for Power System. The line man rodeo was, we hosted the line man rodeo at the Truustale Training Center. There were more than 4,500 attendees. 11 utilities participated in a friendly competition. 21 journeyman teams, 22 apprentice teams. There were approximately about 70 both throughout the campus, providing a lot of information for outreach, job outreach, for recruitment services, customer service, employee development. It was a very jovial and family-oriented event. There were no safety issues, so that was a major relief, and we're very proud of that. DWP scored very well. Our teams on the apprentice, they were placed as the number one and number two in the overall ranking. And on the journeyman category, out of the top seven, our LADWP journeymen were, three of them, three of the top seven were DWP employees. I just want to congratulate the, the team that organized this. It was well done, and especially for the family events, there were a lot of, you know, rock climbing events, petting zoo, as well as face painting for the little kids. So everyone was very happy, and I would like to thank the Power Transmission and Distribution Division, our fleet and aviation services that demonstrated our human external cargo capabilities, our security services, and our AV, audiovisual services groups. They all participated there. So by all means, it was one of the most successful rodeo events. Our teams are preparing for next October for the Nationals at Kansas City, and we hope that we're going to bring some trophies from there as well. We have a short video. Reggie, if you can play it, that would be great.
Since Reggie's not here, that would be Jason.
Some audio. Reggie?
Line Man Rodeo is where we bring together the best of the line men in the whole series to compete and so that they can demonstrate their unique skill sets and expertise to their family members, to their peers, and loved ones. It's a family event.
Hey, so I got a, I have an egg in here, and I'm going to take it up, and I'm going to climb down with the egg in my mouth without cracking it. You guys believe in me?
No.
This is a stage where they show their passion to their profession. It's about honor. It's about safety. It's about job outreach here. It's about the duty that we, we take very seriously, which is keeping the lights on. That's what line man rodeo means. I would like everyone to have fun and look for resources here. A lot of job opportunities. LADWP is looking for good line men and women in the future. Would like to expand our trades area. This is a great stage for achieving that goal.
Would like to thank all the partners or stakeholders within the department that supported us, including our labor partners at IBW Local 18. And on behalf of the Power System and the Truustale Training Center, I have a trophy for the Water and Power Board of Commissioners for your continued support and leadership in this area. So I would like to present that if I may.
Oh, terrific. Thank you.
Do, very nice.
Yay. Leave this right here.
Thank you, Simon.
Thank you, Marty.
Next, I'd like to introduce a new member of my senior staff team, Mr. Greg Reed. He's hiding over the corner here. Greg may look familiar to you. He most recently was the General Manager of West Basin Municipal Utility, Municipal Water District. I brought him back to the department after 20 years in water engineering to become the new Senior Assistant General Manager of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. So Greg has taken on a new role with us here, and, and so we're very happy to have him on board. He did spend 20 years in, in the department prior to going to West Basin. But in addition to his professional career, Greg has been a real champion of DEI efforts even before we could spell DEI. He was very involved in recruiting colleges, very engaged with not only own HR, but also city personnel in terms of improving outreach and professional development. He spent time really helping Society of Women Engineers and Society of Spanish Professional Engineers when they were getting off the ground here, and then worked to form our own first-ever employee-based chapter, NESBI, the National Society of, Society of Black Engineers here at the department. So he was foundational in that. And so he comes back to an area that's due to him professionally, officially. He's going to put on a Superman cape.
I so like that ringtone.
Even professionally, he's an engineer by trade. His heart has been in this area for a long time, and, and he's got a lot of work cut out for him in terms of helping with our DEI initiatives, as well as HR and recruiting, and all the, all the initiatives that we have to really, really increase and attract the best and diverse workforce we can for the future. So Greg, I want to welcome you, and thank you for, thank you for finding your way back to the department.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you. On AAPI Heritage Month, so just briefly, we've had several events and a couple of them at our yards, actually. This last Saturday, we participated for the second time, along with other city and other local agencies, in the Department of Public Works Day of Service event. And they did work to clean and beautify five historically AAPI neighborhoods, including Chinatown, Taitown, Little Tokyo, Historic Filipino Town, and Koreatown, Little Bangladesh. And we also were able to provide water for, and hydration stations for the volunteers for that, and I want to thank our employees who, who took part in that. Yesterday, we welcomed members from the Japanese-American National Museum, right down here, just right down the street on, on First Street, for a virtual program for employees. Participants explored a number of powerful artifacts and images and documents that the museum has in its collection, as well as heard the first-person account of a World War II person who'd been incarcerated in Roer, Arkansas for three years, June Burke. And one of the reasons we do events like this is really to help us understand each other and each other's experience better, to really provide a deeper and more, better understanding of where people are coming from and their backgrounds, and what's made them who they are today, to really help strengthen the social fabric of ourselves as a workforce, as well as how we represent ourselves in the city. So that's why these events are so important for us. And as you mentioned, tomorrow is a final event, the virtual panel, looking at Advancing Leaders Through Opportunity. And I know we have yourself, as well as six AAPI employees from different jobs in the department, talking about their own experience and leadership here at the department. And there'll be information online. It's on, and the Office of DEI has it bolted out, as well as on my DWP website for how to access that. For the eighth year, our Key Account Section honored 18 of our largest utility customers for their efforts to help us with sustainability and our annual Sustainability Awards. Christian Katz and I were at La Crete Center to, to honor those folks together. The 2023 attendees, they added over 300-plus electric vehicle chargers, reduced about 2,900 tons of CO2 emissions, which is equivalent to over 700 cars removed from the road, and saved annually 6 and 1/4 million gallons of water. So it was, we do this every year to honor folks who've taken advantage of our programs and engage with us to be, help LA become a more sustainable city, because we realize that this is something that we certainly cannot do by ourselves. Also, on May 6th, our Chief Operating Officer, Eric Mineman, who actually is in Washington, DC, representing us at the Large Public Power Council right now, he joined Councilmember Monica Rodriguez for the opening of the West Lakeside Street Park in Silmar. If you're going up the Five Freeway and the Police Training Center and the Helicopter Center is on the left, there's a big piece of property on the right, which is Lakeside Debris Basin. Hard to imagine, but that was all contiguous before they put a freeway through the middle of it, so way back when. And then just above that is a little knoll, is an area that became a park, and that was the Department of Water and Power property. We had the groundbreaking probably a couple of years ago. And so it's a beautiful park down in the community that, that really is lacking park space. So we're glad that we could participate with the council district, as well as Department of Recreation and Parks, in helping make that park a success and, and then help it become a reality. And then lastly, June is Pride Month, and as you mentioned, the Pride Parade is on June, Sunday, June 11th, and there will be a bulletin coming out this week to announce for employees who'd like to be involved with that. So, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right. Terrific. Are there any introductions of motions for future consideration? Seeing none. Comments from the ratepayer advocate?
I have a presentation on matters related to the budget and pastors for the budget, and it would probably be best I give that after Ann's budget presentation.
All right. Terrific. Before we go to Item H, we're going to move into a closed session. So in advance of that, I'd like to take up our presentation from Aspire, if they are in the house and ready to go.
Mr. Reed, would you like to do the introduction?
I see. Terrific.
It's going to be Greg's first official function in his new role.
Well, while they're assembling, I'd like to also welcome Mr. Reed back. He was one of the first employees that I met when I joined the board, so it's good to see him.
Thank you so much for that remark, Madam President, and thank you for such a gracious introduction, General Manager. I'm so overwhelmed with joy for being back home where I belong. My first week was last week, and such a warm reception by so many friends and colleagues who are here at the department, who I've known across the 20 years that I've served here at the department. And I'm really proud to be serving in the role of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer for the exact reasons that Marty highlighted. And I'm thrilled to have an opportunity to introduce our Aspire organization as a part of our Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrations. And so with that, we have April Thang, Interim Treasurer, and Michelle Southfield, Interim Secretary, who are going to give a great presentation of what Aspire has accomplished in the short period that they formed and all that they set out to do going forward. And it's really important that we celebrate organizations like Aspire, because it really builds the fabric of our employee organizations, builds the culture that we want to have and celebrate, and really uplifting our various backgrounds and our cultures that makes LADWP and our greater city so vibrant. So with that, I'm not going to take any more time, because I want to allow the ladies to take this moment to present Aspire. Thank you.
They're getting to it.
Sorry.
Is there a presentation this can be?
Hey, Jason, can you queue up the presentation for Aspire?
We have lots of directors out here.
Thank you. We're right there. Okay. Get started.
Where's Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Reed, for that introduction and for your NDEIO's continued support of Aspire. Good morning, Board President McLean-Hill and board members, and happy Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. My name is April Thang, and as Greg mentioned, I am the Interim Treasurer of Aspire, the first official DWP Employee Resource Group. I'm joined by Michelle Southfield, the Interim Secretary of Aspire, and we are honored during the celebratory month to be able to provide you with Aspire's annual report for 2022, 2023. Aspire's interim president, Deborah Hong, sends her regrets that she was not able to make it here today for the report. So Aspire, just to remind everybody, we are Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander supporting progress, inclusion, respect, and empowerment. Today, we'll be providing AAPI statistics for Aspire and LADWP, and we'll introduce you to the hard-working Aspire leadership team and highlight Aspire's 2022 contributions to LADWP as an ERG, and also what we have planned for 2023 and beyond. At LADWP, AAPI employees represent 17% of the workforce. This past year, Aspire has strived to engage those employees and their allies to make them feel seen, and also to foster understanding of their cultural experiences. We've done this by communicating with them through our mailing list and through our events. There isn't one singular story, language, or geographic region that defines Asian culture. Aspire is proud to highlight the diversity and cultural richness that makes us who we are. Aspire truly represents an effort by LADWP employees from across the department to caretake this ERG from its conception to what it is today and beyond. I'm proud to say that Aspire leadership team represented here has successfully worked together and would help from many other DWP employees towards the accomplishments we'll be sharing in this presentation. And despite COVID challenges and starting out largely as acquaintances, we formed a cohesive group because we all believe in Aspire's vision and mission. Since the last time that Aspire presented to this board, almost a year ago to the day, and up until we were approved as an official ERG on March 29th, 2023, we were still an emerging ERG. So much of our focus in this past year has been driven by our mission, vision and mission, and has centered on raising departmental awareness of the different facets to the AA, NHPI cultures, and also providing a place for AA and HPI employees and allies to gather as a community. No house can stand without a stable foundation, and establishing that stable foundation was part of our goals for this past year. We were approved as the department's first official ERG in March, established a social media presence, and built an interim leadership team. And now Michelle Southfield will present on the second half of our report.
Aspire raised awareness and also fostered community through the various events we coordinated or participated in. From DWP's first official Diwali Festival of Lights celebration in October, Japanese origami craft kits distributed to employees and their families at the 2022 Board Day Holiday Fest at JFB, informing employees about events in their local neighborhood related to Lunar New Year, to standing in solidarity with the department after the tragic events in Monterey Park in February of this year. We were so grateful to Board President McLean-Hill, General Manager Marty Adams, and IBW Business Manager Gus Corona, who showed their support by speaking at that event. And we've continued this effort with this month's AAPI Heritage Month celebrations that have been going throughout the month of May, which include employees sharing their cultural experiences on Aspire's Instagram account, building community with field employees through meet and greets at the Temple and Main Street Yards, and JFB cafeteria lunch specials every Wednesday featuring an Asian entree. Tomorrow is a busy day with a meet and greet at Main Street Yard in the morning, and you can grab Japanese Chicken Katsu Curry in the JFB cafeteria to eat, while you watch the virtual panel called Advancing Leaders Through Opportunity, where employees will discuss leadership and representation. More information about these events are included in the bulletin that was distributed via department email. We're proud of what we have accomplished so far, but there is still so much we want to do as an ERG. As we look ahead, we will continue to focus on Aspire's tenets of culture, community, and development by bringing back our Diwali celebration, hosting a self-defense class similar to the one we held last year, holding a membership drive, and a networking event towards employee development. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your continued enthusiastic support of Aspire and the PRGs and other emerging ERGs. And for more information about Aspire, we can be reached via email at aspire@ladwp.com, or you can find us on Instagram at ladwp underscore aspire. And we would also like to present today Aspire t-shirts to those board members who didn't receive one last year when we made our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I highly recommend the self-defense class. That was fun last year.
You did that, didn't you?
Yes. All right, who peaches that? As I indicated prior to taking up item H, we included that we would move into our closed session, but you know what, just to keep from breaking continuity, why don't we move to the second management report first? I want to keep Jason on his toes.
Good morning, Board President and Commissioners. Ann Santilli, I'm here today to present our proposed final budget for 2324. And as part of that, we also have a reestimate of the 2223 fiscal year receipts and appropriations and the updated annual personnel resolution that supports the 2324 budget. So for our proposed fiscal year 2324 budget, we have $8,240 million of proposed spendings, net of any reimbursements. Forty-seven percent of it is for capital and operations and maintenance costs related to power-funded activities, while 20% of it is related to fuel and purchased power, which supports 53% of our renewable power goals. 20% is for capital and operation and maintenance costs related to water-funded activity. Only 2% is related to purchased water due to the large snowpack, and the remaining 11% is debt service and other costs. Major changes since we came back with the preliminary budget includes increasing the annual personnel resolution from 13,456 employees to 13,713. The majority of the increases related to 149 positions related to meter services and field operations, 81 positions added for security, 12 positions added for supply chain services, and 15 added for the retirement office. There was also some staffing realignment to move energy efficiency, security planning and engineering, and other small organizations from joint to power system. From these changes and the changes in our preliminary budget, we have a net increase of $11 million, and this is related to the staffing and also changing our planned bond issuances, and then also reducing some contract spending. Now, one of the things done that has been changed that was done in prior years is we reviewed the cost recovery of our current costs for the infrastructure and operating support, which are base rate funded activities. And through our process of working with the Office of Public Accountability with the support of the City Attorney's Office, we did identify $373 million of charges that were base rate funded that qualify for pass-through. And this is 9% of the power base rate costs and a little less than 1% of the water cost, base rate costs. We did not allocate any overhead costs related to these expenses through the rates. Taking a look at our staffing, our budget includes funding for 11,848 positions. Right now, as of March 31st, we're occupied at 11,035 positions, so we do have room to grow. And in the labor, it's $1.6 billion. That does include $57 million for exempt labor, so we know we need exempt labor to do some of our activities, as well as $317 million for overtime and $846 million for benefits, which is medical and pension costs. Our proposed budget supports an integrated strategy for improving the customer experience by maintaining water and power reliability, investing in sustainable water and power supplies, investing in customer-facing tools, investing in our employees and working with our vendors for diversified resources, investing in technology to modernize our resources, all while minimizing our rate impact. For power system capital and O and M, when you look at these activities, you can see that the largest piece, 38%, is power system reliability spending for $1,473 million. The next piece is investing our assets to support renewable energy, which is 473 million or 11% or 12%. Infrastructure, which is investing in our generating activities, has 19% of the budget. Energy efficiency is 4%, and power system share of joint organization costs is the remaining 26%. So for power system reliability, some of the key goals, measurable goals as part of the 2324 budget includes 3,700 pole replacements, 12,006 harms crossarms, 1,255 transformer replacements, and then having a 95-minute SADI index and a .78 SAFI index. Looking at power system sustainability and the supply, we look at that as part of the renewable portfolio standard spending, our infrastructure spending, and our energy efficiency spending. And during fiscal year 2324, we will create the 2023 Strategic Long-Term Resource Plan. We'll comply with the California Energy Commission Integrated Resource Plan. We'll seek and obtain external funding from the Inflation Reduction Act and others, and we'll also work on our power system customer benefit programs, which is energy efficiency, electric transportation, and power system incentive program, which is our demand response program.
So I just have a quick question. I don't see anything in the budget. So I don't see anything that's different about this than what I saw, you know, weeks ago when you first presented. And so if you go back to the power system reliability program, I don't know how those expenditures track against our need to make sure that the system, I mean, you're talking about pole replacements, crossarm replacements, transformer replacements, and we've seen all of this in these kinds of presentations before, but there isn't really any context as it relates to, you know, compliance-related issues that we just dealt with or any other strategic goals. So I don't know how this relates to that.
We included on this slide the measurable goals that we have, but I could turn it over to Simon to talk about some of the other priorities of power system that relate to what you mentioned?
Yes, the Power System Reliability Program encompasses all our priority one and priority two jobs. There is a big overlap between the, anything that comes out of the inspection, repair jobs that we have to do is within the Power System Reliability Program. We believe we have enough funding for next year to address our priority two. After that, it's going to be maintaining the low levels of priority one and priority two, and I think we'll be able to accomplish that. So there is an overlap, even though we're not increasing the amount, the amount that's shown as 1.4 billion will cover that.
Looking at the water fund, capital and O and M expenditures, combined $1,644 million. 38% is planned for infrastructure spending, 22% is water quality spending, 14% is the water supply spending, 6% is our Owens Valley regulatory spending, and the remaining 19% is water system share of the joint organization costs. And looking at the water supply sustainability, we look at the infrastructure spending and the water supply spending. And for water system, they have key goals of 2,000, 225,000 feet of main running replacement, 6,900 of trunk line replacement, and also increasing our turf rebate, replacement rebates. And on the water quality side, this includes improving our treatment processes at Fairmont Sediment Plant, our groundwater remediation, our water quality reservoir improvements, and our chlorination station improvements as well. And Insamo, would you like to add anything on the water to give more specificity?
Not sure how much more detail that needs to be provided, but basically the investment here, Commissioners, improving water quality, the Fairmont Sedimentation Plant is significant, but it improves the quality of the water coming into the filter plant, which is going to obviously increase the longevity and the efficiency of the plant that we have, especially in years like this where we have a lot of water. Having a more efficient filtration plant is very significant. There's been a lot of investments, and we're getting towards the end of the groundwater remediation projects. We should have those three projects completed end of this year, beginning of next year, which is going to allow us then to be able to maximize the use of a groundwater basin, a San Fernando basin, which, as you know, is heavily contaminated, and currently half of our wells, wellfields are not being utilized. So this is going to allow us to be able to fully utilize our water rights there.
I'm actually interested in the, go back a slide, $100 million for Owens Valley Regulation. Could you just talk a little bit about what that number entails? And that $100 million, is that something that we expect to see every year? I'm just, I just want to sort of underscore, it's a pretty, it's a large number.
It is a very large number, Commissioner, absolutely. And as you know, as part of the operations of the aqueduct, we are regulated by the Long-Term Water Agreement. The Long-Term Water Agreement identified over five dozen different projects and programs that were required to operate and maintain as part of mitigation for the impacts that took place when the Second Aqueduct was built. So this money is being used to maintain those facilities. We also provide water to some of these facilities as part also of the Long-Term Water Agreement. It's a legal requirement. And yes, the expectation is you will see these type of numbers on a regular basis. This may even include also Owens Lake, if I'm not mistaken, which is a long-term commitment the department has. We've invested $2.5 billion, and have around 60 people there on a regular basis maintaining this facility to make sure that we're in compliance. So yes.
Yeah, $2.5 billion to date is, again, an awful lot of money. So that's all I'll say for now. We'll have quite a lot more to say when we're not in open.
And the operating budget on the lake is, I think, a little in excess of $20 million after all the capital expenditures, but that's an annual operating budget at this time.
I think it's just really critical. We hear a lot, see a lot, you know, newspapers write a lot, but rarely do they focus on the amount of money that actually leaves Los Angeles. You know, and to think of that as something in perpetuity is very difficult to, you know, wrap our heads around, or at least it's difficult for me to wrap my head around it. All right, you could keep moving?
Another area of spending for the program year is improve our customer satisfaction. As I mentioned, operating support is not just customer services, it's all the joint organizations, our insurance costs and everything that's not specific to water and power. So for fiscal year 2324, we've identified $207 million of costs that, some of it is going to help us improve our customer relationship management solution, stabilize our customer billing system, our interactive voice response unit. A year or so ago, we bought the Eagle Rock Customer Service Branch. We're making improvements there, and we will be working on the LADWP website. Diversifying our resources is another key strategy. And for fiscal year 2324, we have $20.1 million in the Diversity Equity Inclusion budget, $17.8 million for corporate human resources, and then $19.7 for beginning the JFB refurbishments. And then, modernizing our technology. Some of the goals for fiscal year 2324 include completing Phase One of the Advanced Meter Infrastructure Project, performing the physical security assessment to identify technology advancements to protect our critical infrastructure, and then continuing work on our Enterprise Resource Planning Program, which includes Phase Two and Phase Three of the HR and financials. One of the things that we do want to make sure is our rates maintain, we're competitive. So this is a snapshot of a customer bill, residential customer who uses 500 kilowatt-hours a month as of January. So our bill before taxes is $96. Based on our budget, this will go up to $104 approximately. It's 22 cents a kilowatt-hour is our system average rate. On the water side, our, as of January, our water utility bill for a customer who uses 10 billing units per month on the residential side is $83, and that is also going up, I think it's $87. And for today, what we would ask is your approval to transmit this budget to the mayor, the city council, and the other relevant stakeholders. And starting in June, we will present the board packages for our rate recovery of our pass-through adjustments for our infrastructure, energy, energy programs, and other pass-through costs.
And Ann, to clarify, the impacts that we have in the budget on the rates is through the pass-throughs, correct?
Correct. Our base rates are not changing, but one of the other items that, in our ordinances, there's a base rate revenue target. And so based on the current ordinances, our base rate revenue target's approximately $2.2 billion for power, and then water has a target for residential apartment and commercial customers. That's going at 5.6%. The target is going up. So what we will do is we will also bring that to the board in June, asking for approval, and then we'll monitor the actual base rate revenue bill through our customer billing system, determine how close we got to the target, and we'll bring that difference back to you in November of 2024.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
This is the point where it's best to follow up with my short presentation. These are the Office of Public Accountability Rate Payer Advocates' comments on the budget and also on the changes in the pass-through components. The OPA supports approval of the budget, both the water budget and the power budget. We also support the changes in recovering methods for certain fiscal expenditures from base rates moving into pass-throughs to reflect the changing environment of what costs are needed in those categories. The additional overhead alignment work is underway but is not included in this. And we would also like DWP to update their forecasts of rates in the financial plans as part of the June, September, and November rate factor discussion before the board, so they understand how the pieces of these things move forward. For example, as Ann just mentioned, there's likely to be a bump because of the base rate revenue revenue target in January, but at the same time, water revenues unrelated to commodity costs are down this prior year. So there will probably be a bump up in addition for that. And also, on the power side, it depends on how final sales for the year come in. It could go up, it could go down. The pass-through factors, as proposed, we say, or we think are reasonable. However, there's substantial uncertainty in the rate impacts of the budget and the pass-through recovery, sales being one of the key issues, as I just pointed out. In addition, we like the new budget presentation in that it integrates the budget presentation of all systems and includes elements of the strategic plan, which is a welcome addition. The budget does have some difficult spending goals, and DWP has had challenges in stepping up both staff and vendors quickly. And this will be especially hard with the city trying to step up other categories, especially police hiring in the process. So we have to find ways to streamline this process, both at the DWP level and at the city level. And a key thing is a lack of a rate review since 2015, 2016. It's a fundamental operational, financial governance and transparency issue. It's important to have rate reviews at least every four years, if not more frequently. To understand what's changing in this year, we like to look at last year, this year, and next year. And the first columns to the left on this chart compare how we performed in fiscal year 2122, so the prior fiscal year, and how are we doing with regard to our spending so far this year? And we've made significant step-ups in the power system and in the joint system relative to the prior year. Water system, I assume, was trying to manage overall water supply costs in this process. How is performance relative to the budget that this board approved last year? We take the same reestimate of actual and compare that to the approved budget, and we may have been a little ambitious relative to performance. We're 9%, 9 and 1/2% above the budget in power side. We're slightly below budget on the water side, and we're about 3% below budget on the joint system side. Now, how are we, what are we proposing for next year? Again, there are some significant step-ups in the joint system, which we think will be hard to achieve. An 18% increase is over, slightly over $500 million increase, and that increase is more than the increase in the total budget, which is slightly under $500 million. So can they do it? It will be challenging. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm curious about the joint increase. So, Ann, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
For joint system, we are seeing some increases. Let me see.
And on the issue of hiring, and I saw that we increased the APR in this budget, how are we going to track actually translating budgeted positions into people in the department doing work? Because we have had significant challenges in the past in achieving those numbers, and it doesn't, we're not going to achieve anything else if we can't get people to actually do work.
Yes, so we are strategizing how to expedite the hiring. Part of this is moving on positions that we have open now and lists available within the department. We have a number of positions where the city has lists available and expediting that hiring, where we're not waiting on a city process to get there. At the same time, we're working with the personnel department to find any method we can, along with, especially the other level of city hiring going on, is how to make sure that our exams are properly processed and to do things, ideally doing some testing and examining, and create lists particularly for the field forces that are more related to us on our own outside of the regular personnel process. So we're working on those efforts. But the first initial effort is to exercise lists that we already have available for vacancies.
And we have a pretty significant number of folks on lists that are.
We do, right, and we do. And we talked yesterday about over-hiring at entry level, because we know that the vacancies occur throughout the organization, like holes in the Swiss cheese, and because of the way it takes to fill, if we wait, it's a long process stepping down. So we discussed yesterday over-hiring entry level, knowing that those positions will be absorbed into the ranks. And so that'll be part of our strategy moving forward to expedite this.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have an exact tie-out to Dr. Pickle's number, but I can tell you, if you compare the reestimated '22, '23 budget to the '23, '24, we are looking at higher bond costs to support capital investments. There is an increase in labor cost to support the staffing. Insurance costs have went up or proposed to go up approximately $30 million from the reestimate of '22, '23 to '23, '24. And most of the other ones are not too significant, but I can provide a report back to reconcile the difference.
Okay, that would be appreciated. And I didn't say anything about the technology aspect of your presentation. I mean, we've been seeing that same slide with those same priorities now for a number of years. We've really got to get that process moved forward and completed, so I appreciate it. Any questions or comments?
One thing I would like to add, if I could, is that we have gone through the budget as well as the strategic plan to make sure that we have alignment between what our goals and our plans are on paper and what's budgeted for. And so there is alignment between those two documents. So if we achieve our plan, we'll be achieving our budget and vice versa.
And there are additional materials and appendices to my report. My changes tie to Ann Santelli's Slide 24 and 25.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments regarding filed items?
Not at this time.
Then, at this time, I would propose a closed session, after which we will come out of closed session and take up Items H. There are the magic words, Ben.
Yes, the board is commencing closed session. After closed session, the board will publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention thereon of every member present in accordance with California Government Code, Section 549, 57.1.
Terrific. And we can actually go to our conference room. That way, since we're coming back, we don't have to clear the entire room.
Please maintain silence for the next 20 seconds. The microphones in the audience and at the dais are hot. Would you please maintain silence for the next 20 seconds, please?
Madam President, we're ready whenever you are.
Would you take the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Katz?
Present.
Commissioner Lehr?
Present.
President McLeanhill?
Aye.
Three commissioners of corps, Ms. President.
Okay, thank you. So that's retroactive for a year. I'm just curious about that.
Correct, yeah. This is a training contract that we use for our staff. The contract ended last June, so we're just kind of continuing from the June.
So have you been utilizing the services between the time of the contract ending and the current request for extension? Or this is just a formality that when you extended, it extends from the prior date?
Correct.
It's for continuity.
Just so there's no gap in the contract, so we can amend it or continue from the date that the last contact ended. But we had to go to city council because we're exceeding the five years. So the ED4 process took quite a long time for us to be able to...
So it's for contract continuity, basically.
Correct, correct. But we've had other training vehicles that we've utilized, but we haven't been able to utilize this contract. It's not a service impacting contract. It's just been for training purposes.
No, I understand. So just as a matter of process, we can have a contract. The contract essentially lapses or expires because the term was over. And then come back a year later and say, well, gee, we're going to extend that contract. We're going to add money to the contract. And we're going to call it continuity. I just don't understand that process.
And the option would be to come back with a new contract and to piggyback the same way. So do you want to explain why this is a...
Tanisha's going to get up and explain. She worked... This is Assistant Director. Hello. Yes, I'm Tanisha Smith, the newest Assistant Director. So ideally, we don't renew after a... I mean, we don't extend or ratify after a year. But in this particular case, when it came to our attention, we did have to go through the ED4 process. That is a lengthy process. So because we were not changing any of the...
Please maintain silence for the next 20 seconds. The microphones in the audience and at the dais are hot. Would you please maintain silence for the next 20 seconds, please? Madam President, we're ready whenever you are.
Would you take the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Katz?
Present.
Commissioner Lair?
Present.
President McLean Hill?
Uh, present.
Three, uh, three commissioners of corps, Ms. Present.
Okay, thank you. We are now at, um, item H. Uh, I'd like to take item two, uh, uh, as special. Are there any other commissioners that would like to hear any items special?
No, not today.
Terrific. Then, um, a motion for approval, uh, for items L... I'm sorry, items L1, uh, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Is there a motion to approve? Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Uh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion adopted.
Um, terrific. Uh, I have a question about, uh, item 2. It's an ITS contract. My question is, it's indicated here that we are approving an amendment or extending the term retroactively to June 2022.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. So that's retroactive for a year. I'm just, uh, curious about that.
Correct, yeah. This is a training contract that we use for our staff. The contract, uh, ended last June, so we're just kind of continuing from the June, um, so...
It has two years. So have you been utilizing the services between the time of the contract ending and the current request for extension? Or this is just a formality that when you extended, it extends from the prior date?
Correct.
It's for continuity.
The latter.
Just so there's no gap in the contract, so we can amend it or continuing it from the date that the last contact, uh, ended. But we had to go to city council because we're exceeding the five years. So the ED4 process took quite a long time for us to, to be able to...
So it's for contract continuity, basically.
Correct, correct. But, um, we've had other training vehicles that we've utilized, but we haven't been able to utilize this contract. So it's not a service impacting, uh, contract. It's just been for training purposes.
No, I understand. So just as a matter of process, we can have a contract. The contract essentially lapses or expires because the term was over and then come back a year later and say, well, gee, we're going to extend that contract. We're going to add money to the contract and we're going to call it continuity. I just don't understand that process.
Yeah, and, and the option would be to come back with a new contract and to piggyback the same way. So, do you want to explain why this is a...
Tanisha's going to get up and explain if she worked. Now, this is a system I recommend by Jennifer. Hello. Um, yes, I'm Tanisha Smith, the newest assistant director. So ideally, we don't renew after a... I mean, we don't extend or ratify after a year. But in this particular case, when it came to our attention, we did have to go through the ED4 process. That is a lengthy process. So because we were not changing any of the, the services that was being provided, it just made sense to come back to the board to attend, but we also had to go to council as well.
Well, except aren't we increasing the amount by...
But even increasing the amount, we're still not increasing the statement of work. So if we... So we could have did another, um, as, um, Mr. Adam said, we could have did another, um, single source request and started a new contract, but we would still be at the same place. As far as, if we had done another, uh, contract with them, then we would have been doing another single source. But since there was a single source and GSA contract was still available, it just made more sense to go back to board and to council to extend. So a ratification, the way that we look at it is anytime you run out of time or money, correct? And so what we done in this time, because the idea was to try to get to board and get it extended before it expired, but that didn't happen.
You know, like, that part I get. That part I'm clear about. What I don't get is how we're sitting here a year after the fact, nearly. Um, and I'm just trying to understand what the context is as it relates to process, practices, rules. I'm just, I just don't under... I'm trying to understand.
Well, one of the...
Because this is a very unusual situation and it's not like we're out a little bit of time. And when you say we... I mean, did we not notice?
Like you said, the council process took a long time. Was it just because you couldn't get on the agenda and they kept...
It usually take anywhere between four to six months. So that's what we tell our customers when they're planning, when they have to go there. So that in itself is something that I think that we need to be conscious of. But I think the main thing, and this is something that me and, um, Edith are, we're going to work on, is just right now, the contract renewal process is based on our customers coming to supply chain. One of the changes that we want to make is to make sure that we're going to the customers, our internal customers, so that we're not in a situation like this. Because if there's, the, when there's a request for, uh, renewal, it goes directly to the customers. Supply chain doesn't see it until that customer goes into ERSP.
So I, that part I get. No, I, thank you for that. I appreciate that. So what you're basically saying is that this, whatever this was, went to ITS as opposed to supply chain. So now you're just telling me that you're not late, they were late.
Um, what I'm saying is the process in itself. I do have the activity log if we want to look at that. Um, but there's...
Well, only because, so this is the deal. So just so you're all, so you're clear? What you're basically, you have all of this history. You have all of your explanations. You have whatever you have.
Correct.
What you need is for me to vote on it.
Yes.
And so, and I have none of that. I have no explanation. I don't really understand the history. I have no real context for... So you guys have made a lot of decisions, except the final decision is here. And, you know, I get your, you know, we wanted to do this for our customer or we wanted to do that or we wanted to do this. At the end of the day, I have a whole different set of interests in terms of what I want to do. And what I want to do is to make sure that, you know, the actions that we take are defensible, are not just convenient...
Correct.
But reflect, um, an overall way in which we, as an agency, proceed with respect to contracting. So dropping balls, forgetting, didn't get it done, did... That's not, those aren't really my issues. Or even that it took four, six months at city council, since that seems to be part of the process. So I guess I'm just looking for something that makes this make sense from my perspective.
Yeah, and I'd also like to inquire about the sole sourcing of this contract. So was the original contract the result of a public bid? And if not, what is the justification for sole source in this type of training?
Well, it's a cooperative, um, with GSA, GSA. So we're not treating it as a single sole source. We're treating it as a piggyback.
Yeah, except you said sole source, which Andrew said, like, wait a minute. Where are we? What are we doing?
I said sole source as far as when we said, leave the piggyback alone and then just deal directly with, um, the vendor. That's why I had mentioned the single source.
Okay, got it.
But it is a piggyback. So the contract that we have is a piggyback off of GSA. And so as ITSD has stated, they did not use the contract during the term when the contract had expired. We were waiting to get everything in place before they could start utilizing it again.
Tanisha, if we brought back an independent contract, could we still piggyback? Or is the opportunity to piggyback would go away?
Well, for me, I would think that that would be a circumvention of the board and the CAO, I mean, of city council. Let me explain to you. The question was, could we still piggyback? If we have a contract in place with GSA, if GSA has a contract, contract, and it's an active contract, for me to say, okay, let this contract expire, let me start another contract based off the same contract, then that's not being really honest, because you currently have a contract in place.
No, I don't. That's the point. I do not.
No, 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 I'm talking about, no, GSA currently has a contract in place. So let's say that we did that, right? Let's say we bypassed, um, city council and let's say that when the request came, we started a new contract and we would piggyback that contract off of GSA. I'm still utilizing that contract, right? I just changed the contract number. And so we didn't want to do that. So for continuity purposes, it was to, it was in the best interest for us to amend the current contract.
It sounds like you're saying it's not just for continuity, that this is actually greater transparency than if you had started a new contract without bringing it to the board and council.
Thank you, Commissioner. That is what I'm trying to say.
It wouldn't hit the five years by the mark otherwise, right?
So Commissioner McLean Hill, you still look confused. So I'm, I, I apologize if I'm not being clear.
I guess what I am is, is having difficulty processing, um, your assertion that this is the best for...
Well, if they wanted to continue using that particular contract. And so based off of our conversation, that that was the best contract for them to use. So what I'm saying is that it was in the best interest to do the right thing, which was to amend the contract, right? Probably not in the best interest to be late, but it was in the best interest to amend the contract as opposed to start a new contract still utilizing that GSA contract. Because I would have come back. We would have come back to the board and you would have seen or we would have asked for the, the contract. But then, that contract is a continuation of that contract that had expired.
So I think you're sort of saying that if you had created a new contract, it would have looked like a new contract, but really it's an extension because it's the same scope, same company. And so by calling it an extension...
A circumvention of the board and city council.
How is it a circumvention of the board? You could have piggybacked a new contract without...
But it wasn't a new contract. That's the thing.
Stop, stop. That's what you keep saying. So you keep saying that. In my mind, when a contract terminates, it's terminated.
Correct.
So in my mind, it is a new contract if you have to begin again because your contract terminated. So just because you don't call it new, that's your interpretation. So, so part of why you're seeing my face is that I don't agree with your interpretation. And so basically, all you're saying is that we chose a process that would require us to continue a contract by going back retroactively and then calling it one continuous thing. Then by, then a process that, you know, resulted in the termination or conclusion of that contract, because it had concluded and that then would have required us to start a new contract with a new justification. And it would have been in front of us, yes. And it would have been a piggyback, you know, with the same existing master contract, yes. But in my mind, that's no less transparent than this. And frankly, I like the process of it. It just feels cleaner to me.
Okay, okay. And I do agree with you that that would have been a new contract. When I kept saying same contract, I'm referring to GSA. So I apologize for the confusion, but I agree with you. That would have been a new contract.
Okay.
And, and we have that option still, to bring a new contract, correct?
So is there any...
I understand, I understand the issue for you is to not have two contracts that then extend, go beyond five years in total without informing the city hall. Is that correct?
We, we could do that, um, and we can write it up. So I guess that it will, it would look cleaner because it wouldn't show that there was a ratification. And so that is an option. But then you would, they would be without a contract a little longer because we would need to start the process.
If I just may, just add something. We did start this a year and a half ago. The, the renewal started a year and a half ago. We were hoping to make it before the contract ended. So we were already in it when the end of the contract date came and it was just kind of getting extended. We would think that, okay, there'll be a two-month gap, three-month gap. It got extended and extended. Some of these processes get really extended. So now, here we are, like you said, almost a year later. We don't have to be retroactively, we don't have to go retroactively back. If we're allowed to, we can just start, you know, from the date on. But a lot of work has gone into it to get us to this point, so we can have a training contract. So what, whatever process that is okay with supply chain and is acceptable to the board, we're happy to follow. We just want to have a...
So what would the timeline be if instead of doing the retroactive, if the contract began with the current date? Are you saying that you're concerned there would be significant delays in creating the contract?
We have to go back and start a new piggyback process. We're probably looking at another four to six months until we have a new contract in place.
Probably because they would, because ITSD would need to go back. They would need to create a requisition and then they would need to send the request to supply chain and then we would need to process it. So I'm sure that we could get it done within four to six months. That is a poss... That is a possibility.
Um, you know, I'm prepared to do whatever my board colleagues are comfortable with, but I will simply say this. I am just not really prepared to have or to encourage this process where there are all kinds of issues on the staff side that then get presented here as if, well, you know, the, the result being that you're now asking us to do things that, you know, sort of reinforce and align with whatever went wrong on the staff side. And, you know, we talked about this, I think, last time, Marty, about supply chain, um, and whatever this process is really being the tail that wags the dog around here. So I don't know, you know, why it's here, why it's like this, why it's a year after the fact. I mean, it's pretty significant. Um, and it just feels like, um, you know, a mess that we're being asked to clean up as if it's nothing. So, um, you know, whatever folks are prepared to do, I'll support.
We can certainly bring back a brand-new contract if that's important to the board's liking.
Well, I mean, I, I very much echo and understand the president's concerns. On the other hand, we've spent a year and a half without a contract, or not a year and a half, but a year without a contract and a year and a half going through this process. And so I understand the hesitation to now take what sounds like another four to six months without the training resources that we need. So, I mean, I would be prepared to move this forward, but I think, as you've heard from the president, and I'd like to echo and kind of put it on the record, that we don't want to see this happen again and that now that you know just how lengthy this process can be, that the process should be initiated with enough lead time, you know, earlier on in the contract process, so that we don't end up with these gaps. So I hope that with future contracts, if you anticipate that it needs to go to city council, that that process gets started much earlier and not so close to the end of the contract that we end up with this gap and this back, you know?
And as you were making internal decisions, factor in that coming here is a decision point. And coming here with a mess is not where you want to be.
I agree. And, um, Commissioner McLean Hill, I understand what you're saying. I've been watching the past few board meetings. I started Monday in this role. But, but I say that to say is that I've taken all this into consideration and I know where those gaps are. And so I'm committed to making sure. Now, because I just started, there may be a few of them that were still lagging before I got into this new role. But I will make sure that that information is included so that you have a better history of the background and so that it's clear. Commissioner Katz, thank you for assisting me in explaining it. I got it. I'm working on it. You will not be disappointed.
Well, congratulations on your new role.
I'm here to fix it. So with, with, you know, of course, my director, but we're on it.
That's a very...
You'll see some significant changes. Just wait. You'll see them.
That's a very intense first week in a role to have to come before the board. So thank you. We appreciate your, your diligence and your commitment to make sure that this changes moving forward.
And you're, you're welcome to the, the team, I would say.
Yeah.
The greater family, the greater family, yes.
No, I, I've been with, I've been in supply chain since December 2012. So there's a lot of things that I've seen and I know that there's a lot of changes that need to be made and I'm committed to making those changes. In fact, we're on the phone. We've been on the phone every, since this week, talking about those changes. So I guarantee you will see some improvement.
Well, I appreciate that and echo, uh, my colleagues' congratulations. Since I called it special, I'll move adoption of item 2, L2.
Second.
Commissioner Katz?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion adopted.
All right, I think that that's...
Thank you for my initiation, everyone.
Thank you. I think that that, uh, could choose our...
Can I?
H and we need K.
K, the minutes, yeah.
Oh, we need the minutes. We just did...
I'm sorry, G and, uh, K.
Okay. Do you have anything on G?
None.
Okay, thank you. And on K, it's the approval of the minutes. I move approval of the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I, can I, well, I, I have a request that J come back with an explanation of why it's... It's not that dissimilar to what went there. Money, you know, basically is out there. It's, it's a proj... I mean, it's one, I've been, I didn't realize we were like, when we left here, I missed the, the, there's a, there is an item on J, which is...
Oh, one of the filed items.
A Legion Reservoir.
Yes.
And it's funding we've given to the Department of Recreation and Parks, which they have not yet spent and which is lagging. And therefore, I think it would be...
Do you want a report to the board or do you want a report to you?
No, to the board.
Okay, terrific. So we'll, uh, have a report back on the Alleejin Reservoir Community Park Enhancement Fund?
Yes.
Okay, you don't want it written, you want it presented?
Well, I mean, it's $18 million, I believe.
$12 million.
$12 million. And it's been sitting there.
Sure. So we'll put together a presentation for the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second with respect to item K.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion adopted.
Terrific. Uh, I think then that we are concluded with the meeting.
Thank you.
It's a record.
Two hours.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You are welcome.